Please draw me to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us here on this March third city council meeting with our public hearings for Monroe and Berry Street. There are agendas as you walk in on right on your left now. Thank you all for being here. Okay. Katie, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bethany.
Here.
Bronz.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Wolfram.
Present.
Mayor Proton Bellino.
Here.
Aces are all approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Uh, one note I'll say now that I emailed you all. The rules of procedure aren't particularly clear on the consent agenda, but I did look it up. The Michigan Municipal League and Robert's Rules of Order say that the consent agenda is a consent based, meaning it has to be unanimous. So if one member requests something to be taken off of the consent agenda for further discussion, that will, I will treat that as a sufficient action and we are going to update the rules of procedure for that in the future. So if you want further discussion about anything, that is your prerogative as a council member. Okay, anything on the agenda?
With that said, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, have it, we have an agenda. Public comments on agenda items only. Uh, if you're speaking, you will have three minutes. Uh, if you want to speak about the Berry Street or the Monroe, Monroe Street projects, we will have separate comment periods for those. So anything on the agenda items excluding the two public hearings. The podium is open.
I wanted to speak about the letter from C N L. It was a great letter. They said everything was true, I guess, what a great job they've done on the Kiefer. The only thing I can't believe is they didn't mention their 1.6 million dollar budget that they spent on the Dog Theater and what a great job they did to restore the Dog Theater. When I got that information off the website today, so I can't believe they didn't put that in their letter. They had done such a great job there and expected the Kiefer to be just as good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any other comments on the agenda? Okay. What's that going around the corners? I will close the podium. Okay, we will move into the consent agenda. Any comments or questions from council or staff on the consent agenda? We have approval of bills for city and V P claims February thirteenth, payroll of February thirteenth, city council minutes of February seventeenth, and finance minutes of February seventeenth.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn to accept the consent agenda, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, actually, we should return to the practice of doing roll call votes on consent agendas. I also looked up that, thank you. Uh, roll call vote, thank you, Katie, sorry about that.
Councilmember Bronz.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Stuccio.
Yes.
Wolfram.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bellino.
Yes.
Councilperson Bethany.
Yes.
Aces are all approved.
Thank you, Katie, sorry about that. Okay, we will move on to communications and petitions. We have a verbal update from the county clerk. Clerk Dane, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, councilmembers. Uh, just wanted to give an update on what the county clerk's office was up to last year. Uh, and then I'll get into the audit of the November twenty twenty four election that we did. Uh, so first of all, getting older, my eyes are getting worse here. Uh, the county, this is based on statistics from last year at the county clerk's office. Uh, we have four budgets. The clerk's budget, uh, expenditures of three hundred thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-two cents and revenues of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nine cents. Uh, most of the expenditures there would be staff, we have seven on staff in our office. Elections budget, it was a big elections year, so those numbers are higher than even here. We had two hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents in expenditures and revenues of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-one cents. Uh, revenues are lagging behind expenditures, a lot of, not everything, but a lot of things get reimbursed. Uh, and some of the reimbursements hadn't come in by the end of the calendar year, which is also the fiscal year for the county, so that number will go higher. C P L is also another budget we have. We had expenditures of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-six cents and revenues of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents, so almost even there. And then we have a jury budget as well, uh, with an expenditure of six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-two cents. No revenues, um, on that budget. So, uh, enough about the number, the financials though. Last year, we had four hundred and twenty-three babies born in Hillsdale County, compared to three hundred and ninety-seven the previous year, so that went up six and a half percent. I would remind everyone that, uh, this is based on babies born in the county. So if someone goes to another county that lives in Hillsdale, those statistics belong to that county. So, um, we had, uh, then we, we sold one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven certified birth certificates throughout the year. Death records, we had three hundred and fifty-five death records in Hillsdale County last year, compared to three sixty-six the year before, so that went down by three percent. And we sold almost three thousand death certificates throughout the year. Eighty-two notaries in two thousand and twenty-four, sixty-seven from the previous year, so that went up almost twenty-three percent. Uh, we also do the, uh, doing business as, um, licenses. Those were two hundred and twenty-five in two thousand and twenty-four. That went up almost nineteen percent. There was only a hundred and ninety the previous year. Two hundred and eighty-nine people were married in the county, uh, compared to two hundred and forty-five the year before. So that went up almost twenty percent. And we sold, um, oh, I, I should correct that. Those are affidavits, so not all of those were, if someone comes in and applies for marriage license, that's an affidavit. They don't always materialize into an actual marriage license. So we did, uh, two hundred and eighty-nine of those. That doesn't necessarily mean they all got married. Uh, but we did sell five hundred and forty-two marriage, certified marriage licenses. Uh, that would include people coming in and purchasing a copy of one from years past. So, uh, C P L numbers, that's of interest to a lot of people. We had nine hundred and fifty-one concealed pistol licenses in two thousand and twenty-four in our county. That was up from seven hundred and ninety-two the previous year, so about twenty percent increase. That one I break down. And I should note that this is based on the state's fiscal year, so, uh, it ended September thirtieth, uh, in twenty twenty-four, so it's a slightly different fiscal year. But of those, we had three hundred that were new applicants and six hundred and fifty-one that were renewals. We also, let's see, I'll go into this court, some of the court statistics briefly. We had three hundred and thirty-five domestic cases. Those are mostly the divorces and the custody, um, cases. That was up almost five percent from the previous year. Civil cases, that would be, um, without the divorces and custody, that would be appeals, name changes, different civil filings. A hundred and three of those cases, that was up about thirteen percent. We had two hundred and sixty-one personal protection orders, that actually went down from the previous year by about thirty percent. Two hundred and ten criminal cases, that went up about nine percent from the previous year. We had seven jury trials in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, that would include probate and, that does not include district, just probate and circuit. Uh, jurors who served seven hundred and nine in two thousand and twenty-four. Those are the ones that actually served in a juror, jury. We had one thousand, seven hundred and nine calls to appear. That went up about a hundred and thirty percent. We had a lot more jury activity last year. Ninety-eight probate cases, we handled some probate files in the county clerk's office. Uh, juvenile delinquents, that was ninety-eight. Neglect abuse was forty-seven. And adoption cases, we also handled those from our probate in our office. We had fifty last year, so, uh, depending on how you look at that, that can be a happy story or sad for some, but fifty adoptions. Uh, now let's get into some election statistics. Uh, last year, we started out with our presidential primary in February twenty-seventh. We had eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-one ballots cast throughout the county. Voter turnout was, um, almost twenty-seven percent for that election. There were thirty-eight percent who voted absentee, four percent voted for the new early voting in that election. Uh, and then fifty-eight percent voted election day. And then, uh, May seventh, we had a, a smaller election. Uh, that was a recall in Camden Frontier. Three hundred and sixty-five voters participated. That was fifteen and a half percent turnout, twenty-four percent was absentee voting, seventy-six percent election day. Interestingly there, there were less people that actually voted in that election than there were that signed the recall petitions to trigger it. So that was an interesting thing there. August sixth, we had ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-five ballots cast. That was a voter turnout of thirty-two and a half percent. Thirty-seven percent were absentee, again, four percent early voting and fifty-nine percent election day voters. And then the big one, eleven, uh, five, two thousand and twenty-four, that was twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty ballots cast. Voter turnout countywide was seventeen, seventy-seven point seventeen percent. Twenty-seven percent were absentee voters. Uh, nineteen percent were early voting, that was a big jump there. And fifty-four percent voted on election day. Real quickly, I'll just cover this last statistic and I'll get back into your, your more local election stuff. We, we also handle the, the FOIA requests for the county. So the chairman of the county board of commissioners is the FOIA coordinator, but we're kind of the clearinghouse of those FOIAs. And we had four hundred and eight FOIA requests throughout the county last year. Most of those, two hundred and forty-six of those were for the sheriff's office. So then for your, uh, the city of Hillsdale, uh, breaking down your voter turnout just specifically for November fifth last year, eighty-two point eight seven percent, uh, voter turnout for Ward one. That was the highest, I think. Ward two was sixty-nine point seven three percent voter turnout. Ward three was seventy-three point three one percent voter turnout. And Ward four was seventy-two point five two percent voter turnout. So I would just like to note that the way that we, um, calculate voter turnout is based on the qualified voter file, the voter rolls in Michigan. And that number gets polled probably a month, um, or six weeks before the election. Uh, it's, it's a number that, that can fluctuate day to day because of people moving in and out of districts in the qualified voter file, people registering to vote. Uh, some of you probably heard that leading up to November fifth, there was a lot of college activity here. By Hillsdale College, new registered voters that were, um, taking advantage of that. So those numbers can change. And, uh, we poll, like I said, four to six weeks before the election. We get that number straight out of the qualified voter file and, and, and I follow the, the same, um, practice that the state does and a lot of the other counties around the state, uh, where I do not count the inactive voters in that, in that number. So inactive voters are voters who have, uh, they had some election mail sent out. Uh, it would come back with a yellow sticker that could be delivered. There's a, a confirmation notice that gets sent out then by the clerk. And if that comes back, then I'll, then they get on this challenge list in the qualified voter file. We can't remove them from the qualified voter file. We cut as federal law dictates that we have to keep them on. But we can put them in this inactive list. And then if they don't participate after two election cycles, they fall off. So a lot of people don't understand that people are constantly moving. There's just a, a transient portion of our society that we forget about sometimes. Uh, some of it's due to normal behavior, you know, someone turns eighteen and they register to vote and then a few years later they move off to college or something, so that's just constantly happening. Uh, I, I'm expounding on this because I hear a lot of, uh, misinformation out there about where this number comes from on our, our registered voters, um, and the, the percent of voter turnout. And I just want to make sure you understand what, where that comes from and why that number fluctuates. And in particular, there has been some comments about, uh, I think it was twenty twenty and possibly twenty eighteen, uh, the county clerk's office at that time actually included those inactive voters in the, in the numbers, which boosted that voter turnout or actually lowered it, um, in those years. So that was why there was a difference there. But since twenty twenty-two, we have not included those in our voter turnout percentages. All right, so, uh, the state, actually, election law requires that we, um, conduct random audits of precincts after each state and federal election. Uh, interestingly, that doesn't necessarily happen in the August primary because of the, the short window of time between August and November and all the things that have to happen administratively in that timeframe. Uh, so I have actually talked to, uh, our new representative words about how I'd like to see that changed at some point in some election law that we can do audits in, in the primary too, but it would require the primary to be a little bit earlier. Uh, so anyway, we do, we do these in November in particular. We also did them back in the February presidential primary, but not in August. The state gives us a random list. Each county has to have a certain number of audits. I think we usually get three or four. Uh, so Hillsdale City had Ward one picked this year. And, um, there was also a public act that changed how we do that a little bit. I wrote that down somewhere. Public Act two hundred and fifty-four of, uh, two thousand and twenty-three actually prevents the county clerk now from having direct participation in the audits because the county clerk is statutorily a, uh, member of the parties, whichever party they belong to, the executive committee of that, um, county. So because of that, they don't have direct involvement. I did not, um, conduct this audit myself. I actually had one of my deputies, deputy clerks that doesn't, isn't even Hillsdale County resident. And then, um, I had the, uh, one of the deputy clerks from the city of Ridgefield perform it. So, um, in that audit, Hillsdale City did a great job. This, this is a compliment to your clerk and to the election inspectors that worked in Ward one. We go back and we look at more than what the board of canvassers would look at when they canvassed an election. We look at documents that the clerk uses, notices for election commission meetings, things that lead up to the election, uh, to make sure things were done properly. And, um, everything was handled very well with, um, this audit with Ward one. I will just note though, I find this very fascinating. Hand counting, there were total written here. Nine hundred and thirty-four ballots, um, in Ward one. And so you hand counting those ballots. They, the two auditors actually, just because there's so many ballots and it's complicated with the straight party ticket, uh, they didn't balance the first count. Now, the number of ballots worked out, but the, the count of mostly between, um, President Trump and Harris, that didn't match what the canvas total was at first. Uh, and, and as we took a deeper look at it, we had to go through those ballots and really spend some time on it, which, uh, I think speaks to how difficult it is on election night for those that want a hand count of ballots on election night. It's really difficult to do when people are tired and they've worked so many hours. This setting, we weren't tired, we hadn't worked that many hours. Um, and we still couldn't balance the first time we counted. So this was just one race out of a whole huge ballot if you're trying to hand count everything. Um, what we discovered was that there were two ballots in particular. Uh, one was someone had taken the straight party box and it's vote for not more than one. And if you, if you select the straight party, it applies that logic to the whole entire partisan section, which is the whole front side of the ballot and part of the back. So if you select, let's say Democrat, then it's going to apply that vote to every box on the ballot. You don't have to fill anything else out. However, if you do fill something out, it will override whatever you choose for that. It will override that decision for the straight party and, and mark something else if you, if you mark in a specific race. So in one race, someone started filling in the corner of the Democrat box for a straight party. And I think they realized that they meant the Republican, so they stopped and then they filled in the entire Republican box. But it was such a small little, just a little corner of it, that the naked eye didn't see that right away when we were doing the audit. So, um, it took us going through those ballots a couple of times before we spotted that. What that did is it created an overvote for that box, that office of the straight party. Uh, so they didn't make any selections anywhere else in that partisan section, which meant that the overvote canceled that vote. It was a, it was an undervote, there was no selections made there. So once we figured that out, that helped us balance. The other one was just going through them one by one and looking. If you look and see the straight party, someone voted Democrat. And then for the president office right below it, they switched and voted for Trump and actually wrote that in or filled that box in. So they were just looking at the straight party, they see that and they counted it for a Democrat vote when it was really a Trump vote. And so once we spotted that, then we switched that and, and then it was a perfect balance. So, again, interesting note about just hand counting and how, um, even if you intend to do it right and get it done and, and do a good job, there can be human error there. So you have to really be careful and watch those things. Uh, but everything, everything was good with the audit, so, uh, kudos to Katie and, uh, her election inspectors and the training that we do. I think that was all, oh, I did bring, I'll set these to the table over here where people signed in. Just to wrap up on elections, this is something the state puts out. I, I know not everybody might agree with this, but I think it gives us some good information about how elections are conducted so that you can, um, make informed decisions about, you know, what, what can we do better? And we can always do things better. But this is titled, What Makes Michigan Elections Secure. Uh, and there is some good information about the administrative part of elections that people might not know just by looking at this, okay? And you can read it with constructive criticism and, and even get back with me if you want on some thoughts that you have. But I think it would be educational for the public or for anyone on board. And I'll leave some here tonight. Uh, I would like to note, there has been some, uh, some buzz out there I've heard from, from the community locally here that, uh, there's still some fraud in our elections even locally. And I would just like to, again, point to what I already said about the qualified voter file, how that is a tool that changes all the time. There's people moving in and out all the time. You can FOIA reports from that. And whether you get them from the state or from a local clerk or the county clerk, those reports, if you take a snapshot of the qualified voter file, it's going to be just that, a snapshot. And that thing is changing all the time as people move in and out and clerks are, um, recording things in it. So if you want to, and you can do a report that says, I want to know how many people that live in Ward one, city of Hillsdale, participated in an election several years back. And it will give you that. But it's going to be a snapshot of right now, how many people live in this, whatever jurisdiction you're wanting, that participated in that election. Doesn't mean they participated in the election here. They could have been somewhere else and their voter history follows them or leaves with them when they go. So when people look at reports like that from the qualified voter file, especially people that are really interested in our elections, they don't understand that and they get, then they, they think, you know, why is this different? Why is, you know, they, they have all kinds of red flags and questions and misunderstandings about it. So I would like to just remind everyone that we have a board of canvassers. Um, Mr. Bronz was on the board of canvassers. Mr. Palladino was also on board of canvassers. That, those numbers at the board of canvassers, that bipartisan board, they decide after looking at the poll book, the list of voters, even calling in and bringing the ballots in if they want, if they decide to. The final canvas number of, of votes is the official record. And we keep that in our office. That can be compared at any time to the official record that the state of Michigan has. And there is a place where you can find that on their website. And those records match from election to election. So if people know where to look and know what they're looking at, they can have faith and trust that, um, their vote counted. So I'll just end with that unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dane. Can you say a few words or speculate if you, if you can, about the college kids registering and voting? How, how much do, is there a way to know or can you guess based on previous elections?
Well, I, I, my history only goes back to, um, right before twenty twenty. I was an election inspector in twenty twenty, so, but not here in the city. So, um, I think, uh, what was there like three hundred? About three hundred, uh, those are college students that registered to vote. Uh, many of which were, they were shuttling, um, from here where your city clerk was registering them over to the libraries that could vote on election day. So they, they were very active. I know from just reading the collegian that the Hillsdale College Republicans were very active in, in pushing that. And you know what? It's in our election law that that can happen. I don't personally feel comfortable with that. But if they're going to do it in Ann Arbor and, um, you know, East Lansing, why not do it in Hillsdale? I mean, it's, it's, it's in law, so, yeah.
Thank you. Quick follow-up. For the August election, if they're at their parents, but they're still registered because of the November twenty-four election, would they be eligible for mailing ballots?
You're saying, so I think you're saying if, uh, if they registered to vote this past November, leading up to November, uh, if they are still residing, um, in, at the college and they can, they have proved residency already, they're still students, so they took a summer off. There's no way for, we're not going to be tracking their residency verification, um, over the summer. So they've registered to vote already, they're on the voter rolls, they could participate as long as they haven't moved somewhere else. If they graduated or something and, or went to a different school even and registered there, then they shouldn't be registered here. And oftentimes, especially because Michigan is in, uh, the ERIC system, that the, the databases between states that are involved in that talk to each other and they can detect when someone moves. Cause let's face it, when people move, they don't think, oh, I need to go take my driver's license and turn it into Secretary of State branch office. No, they just leave, right? So, um, we have to have ways of being able to detect that and cancel their vote.
But even, uh, even if they like intentionally like move away, graduate and move away. But even if, even if they like intentionally like move away, graduate and move away, and they voted here in November, presumably they haven't re-registered. Let's stipulate they haven't like re-registered somewhere else. They would still be legally allowed to vote here?
If they requested a ballot, an absentee ballot, they could do that. Doesn't mean it's right, but they could do that as long as they're not registered somewhere else. Yeah.
And you'll send absentee ballots to a different address than the one they're registered to?
They have to contact the clerk and say, you know, a lot of snowbirds do this. They say, "I'm here at this," and then they can actually give us a window of time and we can put that in the system and it will automatically generate a mailing label for them that's separate from their registered address.
Sometimes, can I just say?
Yeah.
Sometimes we have, like high school-
Can you hear me?
Sorry, okay. Sometimes we have like high school kids that are moving away in college out of state that is registered here and their requests may be sent there, so they'll get it. I mean, they have to request it and it will be sent back in the county. It's not uncommon.
Yeah, thank you.
That would be, my personal preference would be that college students stay registered where they can request that absentee ballot sent to them, but-
When did the law change on that?
Oh, that's been, I don't know, years ago. I don't know, before my time, so.
Councilman Wolford, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you for your presentation, but what is the population in Hillsdale County?
So that's a totally different number altogether, separate from registered voters.
Like we were, when we started out, you mentioned how many people had death certificates?
Right. That's in my annual report.
So I'm just wondering, how many people live in Hillsdale County?
There are roughly 46,000 and some change based on the 2020 census.
So we had about 7% of the population that got a death certificate. You said there's over 3,000 death certificates.
I said, so I think that number was how many I saw, like certified death records. And if, and some of you might, if you unfortunately dealt with this, you might know that when someone passes away, depending on different things, they might order 10 certified death certificates for one death.
I see.
Yeah, so that's a different number.
Thank you. Councilman Solon?
Thanks for the presentation. Very informative. So I think I was, I misunderstood the straight party ballot. Personally, I'd like to fill out each one individually. But my understanding was, and this is what I'm asking for clarification of, if you filled out the straight party, that you weren't supposed to fill out any of the others because they would, there's a potential conflict. They could have nullified one another. But what I understand from your presentation is that if I voted straight party and then on any of the down-ballot races, I could choose an individual and for that specific, it would make the different choice that would supersede the straight party ticket, but for the rest would all be straight party. Is that a correct understanding?
That is correct, yeah, yeah. So you can override that anytime you want or you can just make the selection. A lot of people just like filling in the rectangles. It takes up more time in the booth and makes the line longer behind you, but if that's what you want to do, you're welcome to do that.
Can you explain the overvoting? So if they, they mismarked the Democrat ballot, they filled in the Republican. Is that spoiled then?
Just for that one race, or in this case, the, it was the straight party-
The straight ticket.
That it's an overvote there. So it cancels out. It won't, it won't record any votes there because they made too many selections. Even if they only made a little corner of it, it still detects that and that's considered an overvote. So I would caution voters who are listening that if you're confident and you don't, you know how this all works, you can vote absentee. But just know if you make a mistake or something and you vote absentee, when that ballot gets put in the tabulator by a Democrat or Republican election inspector together doing that, it'll spit back out and say, "Hey, there was a problem here, but you don't have a chance to correct that because you're at home or you're in Florida." So if you're going to vote absentee, make sure that you don't make those mistakes. Or if you do, you can spoil your ballot and get a new one from your local clerk.
Okay, so we don't have the process of curing the ballots? You don't call the people if the ballot is spoiled? I've heard about that in some states.
Not for situations like an overvote. We do curiam for signature verification and things like that, but not for the act of what's on the ballot itself.
Thank you. Any other questions? All set. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to Communications Petitions, Letter B. Comcast Advisory Letter. The gist of this is that they are no longer carrying Sport TV, part of the Brazilian TV package, and Universal Kids. Those end on, well, Sport TV already ended. Universal Kids ends on March 6th. Any comments on that? Okay, Kiefer House Hotel Letter. Do we have that in front of us?
It's part of the package.
I don't see a link for it.
It's on paged 25, I think.
Oh, yeah, that's where. Okay, I can't click on it.
It doesn't click on it.
Okay, do we have representative from CL Real Estate?
Click on the one before.
Yes, I got it. Thank you. Okay, basically, City staff toured it. Anybody who toured it want to say anything? They're making progress. Okay. Dave, all set?
Yeah, they are, they are making progress. Two members of the staff went through as well as a couple of council members on that particular day. It is a continuous progress and it's moving along.
Great, thank you. Yes, Councilman Flynn?
I know about a year ago, the previous council that asked CL Real Estate for monthly updates in front of council, and they did that for a while. Now they're not doing that. Is that something that maybe we could, maybe just at least get like a quarterly update now that we're getting closer to the finish line so they can say, "Hey, we're here, we're there," so that we don't have to constantly keep touring?
I think they are doing quarterly updates.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
I believe someone was here last month. Yes, Councilman Solon?
Thank you, Mayor Breton. So what happened is they offered monthly updates and then we suggested quarterly because-
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else on Kiefer? Okay. Letter D, we have an update from Commissioner Ingalls. Thank you for being here, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just to give you a couple tidbits and items, the Materials Management Committee met on Thursday, February 27th. The committee drafted bylaws, reviewed items from the Eagle webinar on the grant process and discussed our work plan. The next meeting is Thursday, March 27th. We meet at the county office building conference room at 6:00 PM. And this is a posted public meeting. And I'd like to thank Public Services Director Blake for participating and contributing. Thank you so much, sir. We've had a couple of emails making sure that I had my draft minutes properly done. Jason has been very helpful. At Lewis Henry Park, the park trustees are progressing on preparing for the VNR grant. The park trustees have reviewed the project agreement with the architect engineer, who will be the project manager. He will write the specs and bids and administer the project. It could be up to six months before money is received. Our finance director suggests waiving on spending until grant dollars are issued. The grant is a reimbursement grant and the grant dollars could take up to six months before we really receive any money. And it still is questionable, being questioned as to whether the dollars will flow. We'll learn that in the next six months. And that completes my update for now. If you have any questions, I may answer. Yes, sir.
Not to stir ordinanceness because I know it's a touchy subject with commissioners, but I've had several people approach me asking about the ambulance situation between Hudson and Hillsdale County. Their question is, "We voted in a millage to help the ambulance cover all of Hillsdale County." So they're curious, "Is Reading Emergency Unit not covering the eastern part of the county and that's why we need Hudson ambulance? Or is this an agreement simply between the two ambulance entities and the county has nothing to do with it?" The people I've talked to think that maybe their millage dollars aren't being spent wisely if Reading Emergency isn't covering the entire county.
Understood. That's a great question. The Hillsdale County contract is with each of the five ambulance services that we have in Hillsdale County. Each agreement is a county-wide agreement. Each ambulance service creates its own mutual aid agreement with the other ambulance services. The county agreement is to cover the county. And Reading Emergency Unit does Somerset, as does Wright-Waldron, as does Addison, up until recently, as did Hudson, all serviced as mutual aid throughout the county. And each contract that each ambulance service has is a county-wide agreement. As you say, the millage dollars are county dollars, thus the county ambulance agreement. So we have five ambulance services in our county and each has its own set of challenges, the staffing and functionally servicing. We need all five in order to sufficiently cover Hillsdale County. And that was the hope and the intent of the agreement when they had their contract with Hillsdale County. Hudson Ambulance Service, Hudson Area Ambulance, recently terminated their agreement with Reading Emergency Unit to answer specifically a question. He asked Reading Ambulance Service services for all of Hillsdale County. Just a brief update on that. Tomorrow night, Hudson City Council will be discussing the contract that Hudson Area Ambulance has with Hillsdale County. I'm sure this, the agreement with Reading Emergency Unit will be part of the discussion.
So just so I'm clear, and I apologize for the mulliness, but the county's agreement, our millage dollars are going to, all five of those ambulance services split whatever way? Not just to the one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Each of the ambulance service has a primary service area. Each of the ambulance serviced by contract is a county recipient of millage dollars and services the county. That's the intent and that's what the agreement and the contract says, as I understand it. It could be renegotiated July, August. It's up this year and we'll see how it ends up. But the, you know, it's really disappointing to actually that Hudson has taken this path. The service of the ambulance is one of the vital services that we need in our county and it does require the mutual aid. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions? Yeah, Reading gets about a million dollars, according to Ben Zingus on the ambulance committee. And they cover half of the county, more than half of the population. They cover the whole west side plus Hillsdale, so our major cities besides Somerset, although-
About 60%.
About 60% of the population. They get about 60% of the money. It's 1.85 million total-
Total.
In county ambulance funds, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to introduction and adoption of ordinances slash public hearings. We have two public hearings. We will start with Letter A, a public hearing for the special assessment district on Monroe Street. Okay, let's see. Total estimated cost of this project, $737,000. The special assessments can cover up to 50% of that cost. We're not quite getting to that area. The special assessments are going to cover, what's the portion on here? Just Kim here. Thank you.
So based on my last estimate, we were at-
125-ish?
Yeah, about 17% of the total was going to be covered through the special assessment.
Okay, what else do we want to hit on that? There are obviously the changes from the new policy are in here. So the BPU buildings, I thought there were two BPU buildings. Oh, yes, there are. Those are now getting charged at the industrial rate, $30,000 for the, or $15,000 each for those two buildings. The commercial properties on the street are now getting charged $10,000 and the residential, $5,000.
Yeah, so just for a little clarification, that 5, 10, 15 is the maximum that those properties could be. If they're, if they have less front feet where their allocation is below that number, then they will get the lower number.
Okay. Mr. Mackey, Kim, anything else to add on this before we open it up to the public?
Just prior to the hearing, we did receive one letter in opposition and one in favor of this project.
Okay, so we need a simple majority vote to pass this one, not having the majority of property owners protesting in the district. Okay. Would council like to say anything before we open up the floor? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
I know that Kristin is here. Could I ask her a question or is that for later?
Of course. I think it's good to get the information out before public comment.
I couldn't quite tell. I'm looking at all of the maps and stuff that you printed up. But is Monroe Street going to get any extra, I guess, lack of a better word, cushion, padding? The BPU trucks do a lot of driving up and down and they're very heavy trucks. So can we turn Monroe Street into like an all-seasons, all-round?
That, that road is designed as total reconstruct. So we will be putting new base in and I am designing it as under the quote-unquote major street type of design.
Okay.
Slightly thicker asphalt and 12 inches of new sand, eight inches of new stone base. So it's a total reconstruct, so it's getting new base in everything.
So it'll be beefier than a typical street?
Yes. Typical local street.
Right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, can you, thank you, Councilman Butler?
Yes, are the sidewalks part of the project?
The north side sidewalk from Manning to West is being replaced because that's totally, it's a mess right now. There's nothing left to it. So that is a complete reconstruction sidewalk. Any other sidewalk being done will be on a piecemeal basis based on its current condition, except that section. And then all ADA ramps have to come to current day compliance. So every corner, anytime we do a project that's anything more than shipsee, we have to bring all new ADA ramps to current day standards. So every project has that.
So the whole north side will get?
The whole north side from Manning Street to West Street will be a new sidewalk case.
And the structure here, we're not on Berry Street. Is it same for Berry?
No, Berry Street will be whatever piecemeal we need to do to replace anything that's a toast-up or a trip hazard, we will replace when we do the work.
Oh, I see.
And anything that's a largely, usually if we have heaving in the sidewalk and it could be a trip hazard, we will replace those. But just cracks don't simply require us to replace it.
Okay, so you're not replacing it at all, but you'll fix it back because there's a lot of padding?
Yeah, we take a look at that because it's our requirement liability-wise to do that. And then, so Jason and I will go through and assess all the sidewalks as we're doing the work. And anything that's a trip hazard, if we're looking at something that's badly cracked and it would look like it may heave and become a trip hazard, we generally will replace it. It's cheaper to do when we have a contractor that are doing concrete work. So that just makes sense.
Yes, Councilman Flynn?
Is there any, it may sound silly, but is there any way to save the brick from Monroe Street? Maybe sell it and make a few dollars?
So in the past, they've done brick roads in the city and they tried to do that. They took the expense and hauled it all the way to DPW and nobody bought any bricks. So the fact of the matter is, is it doesn't, that nobody really wants them. They don't want to pay for them. Now, I would prefer not to segregate that out because it just drives our cost up. If I have to peel the bricks off for people to come get them, it's just an added cost to us. If council wishes to do that, we can do it. We have a spot on the site that we can, we can stockpile for people to come get them. Fact of the matter is, is they have to handload them and a lot of people really just don't want to do it. I mean, if somebody were to contact me and say, "Hey, I want 100 bricks," I don't have a problem doing that. But in the past, it's just, it's costed the city. But, in the past, it's just, it's costed the city, and we don't yield any income from it.
Uh, one question on Monroe, I already talked to Jason about this, but could you, uh, so I think this is happening. Could you describe the plans for the OPC, uh, parking lot, or the Presbyterian Church's parking lot ramp?
Oh, um, well, that parking area will not be there when we're done. We are be, we are going to be putting in two handicap spots on the street that will have an ADA ramp that's compliant. We cannot, in the design, make, one, the road work, or, two, make the sidewalk work with ADA compliance to that building, the way it is right now. I tried to keep the design the same as it is right now, but in order to stay ADA compliant on both the requirements horizontally and vertically on the road, in addition to where the elevations of the sidewalks are at the building, I can't make it ADA compliant. So, we went with the next best, which was to put two handicap parking spots with a designated ADA switchback ramp up to that sidewalk, and then into the building. The building sidewalks are not compliant for ADA, but that is on the private side, and that's not ours to fix. So, we've, we fixed, we will be fixing the city side to ADA compliance, um, and tying into where we can on the, we, we assess. I hope you understand, we did a lot of surveying and a lot of assessment to try to make that work.
So, the parking lot on the west side, the old train station there where the church is, that won't be? You're saying that won't be there anymore, or the parking lot just right?
The parking lot on the street won't be there anymore. We've designed the road so that the, the problem with that road is, it's currently a crowned road, so the driveways are excessively steep, which causes issues with bumper dragging. We've designed the road with a cross slope to lessen those slopes, so that getting into that parking lot on the west side of the building will be way more amenable to people, and we shouldn't be dragging bumpers, that's the same for Reading Emergencies driveways as well. So, when you go out there, the road currently is on a crown like this, it will now be a cross slope all the way across with the water going to the north side of the road.
Okay.
But, the parking that's there in front of that church by BPU, all of those spots there, we could not make those stay and be legally ADA compliant.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Flynn?
With that said then, with the slope going from the south to the north, will that cause any potential flooding even after you're all done with the reconstruction?
We are constructing a new stormwater system-
Oh.
From about, and the cross slope, I'll clarify that, from West Street to Manning Street is where that road is largely cross-sloped. Once you transition to the other side of Manning, it, it will transition to the current crown that it is right now, because of the way the topography is on the land on the sidewalk. We are building a new stormwater system from about mid-block, going towards West Street, coming to Manning, and then extending up to the river. So, all of that's getting new storm to accommodate whatever water we'll be putting in there.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mackey, thank you.
Mayor Porten, were you asking the city engineer about the parking lot? I know she didn't address the parking lot, she addressed the parking in front of the facility.
I was mostly, they were concerned about the, the parking in front, but also the slope up to the parking lot on the west side.
Yeah, we've, we've vetted all of that, our designs are, um, Jason will have to remind me, but I believe we are within the ten to twelve percent, we're under ten percent. Yeah, I think we're under ten percent, which is the maximum we'll design for, but, um, you know, you know, I'll just go into engineering. So, when you have a cross slope on a road, and you pull a car out of a driveway, you're kind of going with the slope of the road, so the likelihood that you'll drag your front bumper is a lot less than when you have a crowned road with a driveway that's really steep, because you, you know, you're bringing your car down into that valley. So, we've made the situation better, both in slope and with the cross slope, so I, I don't foresee there being an issue. Could there be an issue? I'm, I'm not perfect, but yeah, I, I don't foresee there being an issue.
What's the grade on it right now?
I, I think it's eighteen percent?
Okay.
Eighteen to twenty? I, I haven't looked at those drawings in a bit, 'cause I've been away, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on Monroe before we open up the podium? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we will open up the podium for the public hearing. This, uh, the comments for this should be reserved to mon- the Monroe Street project. The podium is open.
Hello, hello, I'm Kevin Burkett, I own fifty-three Monroe Street. Just a couple of questions, first, a side issue about the bricks. I'm also on the board for the Hillsdale Historical Society. They received, we received bricks from the previous project. We have used them all, I don't know if, how many have been to the fire truck barn. The former Hillsdale fire truck is sitting on a bed of said bricks. We have used up all of ours, we would like to, you know, it's like a final shot to replenish the supply. I think they were just kinda dumped behind our barn, so, we would, they wanna talk and possibly get some of those.
Great.
We have no problem.
Okay, just, I've, it's, uh, quicker, we talked about it briefly in one of our board meetings, and it was, uh, I was thinking this project was a little further down the road, but anyway. Um, as far as on my bill, when will the, um, amounts for the assessments be published?
Kim? Thank you.
Uh, well, because I'm just curious, because my property is, um, I believe is owned by industrial, so I mean, I'm gonna, you could potentially get hit pretty bad.
So, you're currently classified as commercial, so it would be at the ten thousand dollar maximum, um, and that will be allocated based on your front fee, so it could be less than that.
Okay, well, the only thing there is, that's not what I was told when I walked in the building, I hate to argue for more-
And your zoning-
But I'm just being honest.
Your zoning could be different. So, zoning is what you're allowed to do with the property, classification is what you are currently doing with the property.
And that goes back to previous usage?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, as far as when the individual assessments will be published, that'll be for the next public hearing if the resolution is passed tonight. So, we will have those specific breakdowns based on front foot allocation for that next hearing, and you'll get a, a notice in the mail that gives you the amount. Yep, and then you can, you can, you will have a chance at that point to appeal that specific number.
My main concern was if we're zoned light industrial, building change hands, or I wanna use it differently, could the neighbors fight it after I've been?
No, so zoning does not change.
Okay.
Zoning stays in place unless you petition.
You know, I'm getting billed at a higher rate, later on, I need to use, utilize that, the payroll, I was a little concerned about-
Right.
Getting in, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that really concludes most of my questions for tonight, so.
Thank you. Uh, Kim, are the, um, when we had that provisional list, do you think the assessments are gonna come out close to that?
They should be fairly close to that, there's, just with the timing, um, we'll be using the twenty-twenty-five assessments, which haven't been certified yet, to set the maximums, and I do want a little chance to just verify front foot, the front foot numbers before we publish those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And were they not, just out of curiosity, with our action in our last meeting, the commercial and the industrial, don't they now get fifteen years?
Yes, everybody's at fifteen years based on the current policy.
Is that residential too?
Yes.
Okay, so, it's now fifteen instead of the ten?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt the public hearing there.
Hello, Shannon. Just on Monroe Street, um, she just made a comment that they're gonna be doing the street as an industrial street because of all the trucks. That means all the residents on those streets are gonna be paying a higher rate because you're doing an industrial street instead of a regular street, and that's kind of not fair to all the actual residents, um, having to pay a higher rate for an industrial street with more sand and everything else that's gonna make a higher rate, and they have a homeowner and not a business.
Yeah, I see what she means, okay, if I respond, I see what you mean, Shannon. Um, the total amount for the project is actually more, but the caps remain the same no matter, at least, what type of reconstruction there is. So, they're actually paying a lower percentage of the total project cost, I think we said-
Seventeen.
Seventeen percent for Monroe Street, because there isn't a higher cap for the different type of road. Yep, so the caps remain the same no matter the road type. Uh, yes, councilman Butler? Oh, I know, we should, we should stick to the hearing, let's, let's talk after, sorry. Any further comment on Monroe Street?
I mean, if Shannon and you-
Oh, oh, uh, okay, sorry, yes.
Uh, no, but it's, it does make it more likely that they will hit the cap than if it were just a regular residential street. I think Shannon is not wrong in that sense. 'Cause the caps have been coming in, I mean, the, the num- the final numbers have been thirty-eight hundred sometimes, so the cap doesn't come into play, but in this case, more than likely, the caps will be maxed out, just guessing.
I don't think the cap is related to the total, 'cause none of the projects are meeting the fifty percent special assessment. Okay, any further comment? We will seek clarification in a minute. Okay, we will close the podium to the public, uh, was that Kristen or, uh, Jason? Thank you.
So, since twenty-twenty-one, we've only had two projects that have come in under five thousand dollars. And she is right that the cost of the project total is higher because it's a total reconstruct versus, and this is, this is where we go back to letting our roads get to this condition, where we have to make an assessment as to what the appropriate fix is for the roads. Um, but we will, the, you in all likelihood will hit, with the number of properties you have on that street, if everything were at five thousand, and I haven't been here for the previous discussions and the reevaluation of the tens and fifteen thousands, but you will in all likelihood hit five thousand dollars on residential property on that property because of the cost of the project.
I see.
But that is, and that is, we still won't hit fifteen percent, the city's gonna bear the greater cost of that, but we have, we also have to construct the roads to the, to the proper standards as well for its usage. That road will be, we will be requesting, once we finish that road, to elevate that road to a city major street because of what it serves. But the way the rules of the state are, until that road is in a passable condition, we can't petition the state to change it to a major street. So, it, eventually, at some point, the city will start receiving more funding for maintenance of that road, but at this point, we can't do that, because it's currently designated a local street.
Could you do the same thing for Berry, because I noticed that Waldron, South, Sharp, I, I believe, were all considered major, but Berry was local.
You can, but Berry would not meet the criteria. It really depends on how, what roads and collectors it is, and to be quite honest with you, and I don't want to, you know, I don't say that, we have a inordinate amount of ex- major streets. Usually, you're at like sixty-forty, or even seventy-thirty, major street to local street, and we're at fifty-fifty. So, we really don't wanna rock the boat with the state, because they'll start evaluating all our streets and saying, well, that's, to just meet the criteria of a current major street, and start taking funding away.
How is Berry different than Sharp or South? They both feed out onto Broad?
It, it, I, I don't know, you know, way back when, when those got their designations, I don't know what the requirements are, the requirements are now, what areas they collect, how much traffic it collects, and then what it serves. So, like, the stuff that serves schools, and, uh, hospitals, and business areas tend to be classified as a, as a major street. And if you look at Monroe Street versus a Berry Street, Monroe, Berry Street is highly residential. Versus Monroe Street, which has the BPU, the church, the, you know, has mostly businesses on it. So, uh, but they're getting pretty stingy about those reclassifications. And so, we have to be very cautious about our request for making things major streets.
Okay.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna prompt further deeper evaluation, let's just-
Let's not do that, okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification, thank you for the comment. Shannon, I appreciate it. Okay.
May I?
On Monroe, uh, we've closed the podium, I'm fine with it if everyone else is.
Yes.
Okay, we'll reopen the podium.
Thank you. Sincere question, I'm, I'm, when I bought my home, I saw that there was a millage cap in Hillsdale County. And, and I, I bought with the security, knowing that that millage cap applied to all homes in Hillsdale County. And I'm, I'm concerned to note that there's a, a presumption, that there, and not just a presumption, but a, a, a move to enforce special assessment districts in the city of Hillsdale, which is in the county, that has a millage cap on how much it can tax for properties. So, I'm curious, and I probably should have the, the document in front of me before I ask such a question, but very seriously, would like to know how we justify applying special assessment districts additional millage taxes to properties for road repairs that are already paid for under the millage for the county.
Thank you. Um, the basic answer is yes, there is a twenty mil cap for, uh, city operating in millages, in, in addition to one mil for the library, so the cap is essentially twenty-one. That's defined by the Home Rule City Act, I believe, uh, as well as in our charter. Uh, special assessments are not a tax, so you can levy a special assessment, you know, under law, of course, they serve a similar function. Uh, you can levy a special assessment against all property, whether it's taxable or tax exempt, uh, and it doesn't apply, uh, to the, the cap does not prohibit it. That, that's the short answer. Anyone wanna add anything to that? I don't know exactly what the legal history is there, but it's, it's basically to cover extraordinary costs for reconstructions, uh, public improvements. Yes?
Yeah, I think in the premise, the reason they call it a special assessment is you're assessing a piece of property based upon a benefit that the property is receiving from the project for which it's being assessed. That's the deal.
So, if I can follow up with a question, i- is, is rep- is routine street repairs then not a function of the normal budget and the normal? It seems like we're, we're adding function and value, and, but we're doing normal street repair replacement that should've been done for decades, and wasn't done under the, the millage cap. And we're running a surplus on our budget, as far as I understand, but we're applying special assessments to residents with fixed incomes, because there's a habit of running special assessments, not calling them taxes, but holding road repairs in, as hostage for additional tax money. It, it hits as a tax, more or less.
That, yeah, this is the legal distinction, thank you, I'm sorry for going out of order here. Um, yeah, the basic problem is, uh, road, road funding was, uh, neglected for many years. It's actually in last council's packet in minutes, the historical road funding. Um, the most shocking thing that comes out of that is that when property values went off after two thousand eight, we didn't even start to recover property taxable value until twenty sixteen. And now, in twenty twenty-four, we've hit the nominal amount of taxable value that we had in twenty, uh, two thousand eight, but we're still something like sixty, seventy million dollars behind the taxable value when you account for inflation. So, the basic problem is the entire property tax structure in Michigan, in my opinion, um, that has left us behind for, uh, coming on two decades now, as well as actual, I think, mismanagement, uh, in the two thousands and prior to that. Uh, Kristen, something add on this, thank you.
Yes. You're not a, I, I, I don't wanna say you're not a hundred percent wrong, but there are some misstatements there. First of all, road maintenance and road funding comes out of our Act Fifty-One money, which is our MTF funds, our most transportation funds. Those funds are given, given to the city to maintain the roads, and maintenance of the roads are crack filling, hole, hole filling, plowing, everything that we need to do within the public right of way, and that's what the MTF funds are for. Once all those tasks are, are completed, we then have money that can be utilized for road construction, and not fully road construction, and that's on the major street side. On the local street side, we also receive those funds. Those funds are for road maintenance. That is funded at a level that, and actually, Act Fifty-One or nineteen fifty-one will say that the city is required to match any fund used for construction of the MTF funds with local street funds, which the city did by having a charter. Uh, road funding is not a part of property taxes. The only part of anybody's property tax within the city and county that goes to road funding is what our charter has at two point five mils. That is the only money, typically, in cities, you don't have that, and that is the quote-unquote "match fund for construction." But because of the funding level at the local street level, our maintenance on a yearly basis runs at a negative hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, the city has to balance that budget before we can move forth, so there's zero money for local street construction in the maintenance funds that we receive from the state. So, that has to come from the charter, two point five percent, just to balance that budget. On the major street side, which are only the road, we can only spend that on the roads that are designated major streets, that's a little bit higher funding. And in any given year, based on my long-term evaluation, we have about two hundred thousand dollars, so we're, so there's no- So we're, so there's no money left over to do serious road construction. Yes, the system has been mismanaged over the last probably twenty years and not maintained with the monies they had, but they were great, you know, I believe. Having done this in four different municipalities with four different budgets, I would say, you know, they were looking at their budgets and they didn't have a lot of money to do anything over a chip ceiling, which doesn't preserve your roads for the long term. They could have done things, yes, but it, we would still have been in the situation we are in, but not as bad a situation. So the property tax thing, there's only a minor amount of that money from anybody's property tax that goes towards roads. All of it's really coming from the MTF funds. And then in twenty-one, we voted in a millage, which is additional funding. And then most cities, not all cities, but most cities in the state of Michigan have special assessment districts and millages. This is not uncommon. This is not unique to Hillsdale. And I've managed them in multiple cities doing the same thing because it's the only way to fund road projects because of the way the state does their funding roads. And the money that we get at the very, very top end of the state filters down through villages, cities, bus transportation. All of that money gets broken out to the state roads, the county roads, the city roads, before it ever makes it to cities and villages, and it's a small percentage of that overall budget at the state. And it's a sad state of affairs. That's why we're constantly talking about road funding at the state level. But when the governor and the legislative bodies at the state level start making changes, by the time it filters down through all those different entities that share that pot of money, we yield maybe $30,000 extra in any given year. And it's a sad state of affairs, but our state needs to make some wholesale changes. But that's a much bigger question for a much greater legislative body, so.
Okay, thanks. But those two and a half mils take the same head as any other type of property tax, right?
I'm sorry, what do you mean by that?
When property values decline.
Yes, they do, because it's based on the mills that we take in. So, you know, it's subject to any, you know, I can't remember what the reduction is called.
The Headley Reduction.
The Headley Reduction and all that kind of stuff, but yeah, it's, I don't have the glasses on, so you may have to read that.
So if, I put a spreadsheet on everyone's, in front of everyone's podium up there. All the way to the left, it shows the amount of property taxes collected for each of these project areas in 2024. So Monroe Street, for the, that whole street, we only collected $2,000 in property taxes toward street maintenance. So that's literally not even enough to run the snowplow.
And that's, and that's why I bring this up as a big distinction, because a lot of people, I've, you know, I've been doing this for a long time and I have had this discussion with a lot of residents that I made property taxes, so my road should be covered, when in fact, only a very small percentage of your property taxes goes towards the roads. And it's, you know, it, it's just the reality of the way the money works. And we are fortunate to have that two and a half mils. Otherwise, we'd be in a much worse position.
Right, but.
Like, yes, as your property, as your property values fluctuate and houses get sold and uncapped, obviously, that all changes just like your regular property taxes. But all the money we use for roads, I don't know, that works out to what, twenty-five to thirty percent of our monies?
Maybe.
Yeah, if even that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we don't use the general fund money. I, I asked that question a couple of weeks ago. We don't put any general fund dollars toward the road funding, but I think we're in a situation where we need to find room in the general fund to go toward the roads. Even this year, are we doing just this one mile between Arch, Monroe and Berry? That's it, I think.
That is what's currently planned, yes.
That's what's currently planned. So we, you know, we're planning one mile when we have, how many miles of local and major? Fifty?
Forty-eight miles.
Forty-eight, forty-eight miles. So we're on track to repair them all every? Forty years. Well, not quite, because the state repairs some of those roads more frequently, right? But yeah, we're, we're still way behind ever catching up unless we find more money to specifically designate to the roads or if the state gets its act together. Okay, Councilman Bentley?
Uh, just real quick, there's nothing prohibiting us from spending general funds on the roads though, right?
No, and that's what I've been saying. If you get these other funds in better shape, you potentially have more money to contribute to the roads. This would be the council's, you know, elective decision. It's not based on the charter. Okay, few things to go over before we vote on this. Thank you for, I assume Kim provided this. Um, if you have a $5,000 residential assessment, you will pay, um, let's see, seventy-one hundred over the fifteen-year period if you choose to defer it. So those payments range from three hundred thirty-three to six hundred thirteen per year, with the interest, of course, decreasing. So year one, for example, you pay three hundred toward the principal. Year two, you pay three hundred thirty-three towards the principal, two hundred eighty towards interest. Um, so seventy-one hundred divided by fifteen, what are we, we're talking an average of six hundred dollars a month, something like that, over the fifteen years. Six hundred dollars a year, excuse me, over the fifteen years. Okay. Anything else on Monroe? Yes, Councilman Bentley?
As far as the amortization table, if you get a windfall, you can still pay it off. You don't have to stick to the scale.
You can pay it off year one. You can pay a thousand dollars a year. Yep, you can pay it in, in any amount that you want. Is the interest what we've actually calculated? Are we, are we getting a bond for five percent? Or is this just under the assumption of the maximum interest?
This is under the assumption of the maximum interest, so if it goes down, those payments would be lower.
Okay, hopefully, we can get that down to five percent. I wish we knew that now before we were authorizing it. Okay, do we want to have the discussion about the charter and how these petitions work? Or do we want to take a vote on this now and move on to Berry? The basic problem with the charter is that it's not exactly clear, I don't think, when the petitions have to come in. I believe the city staff's perspective is that the petitions have to come in after the date we set a public hearing up into the date of the public hearing. It's not exactly clear in the charter or in the ordinances that that's the case. I think logistically, why we might want to change that is that if there is overwhelming opposition to it, we don't want our staff putting in all this time to prepare the plans and then it gets shut down. So we've wasted hundreds of staff hours and then we don't actually move forward with the project. So I would like to have that, that discussion at greater length about rewriting that ordinance and figuring out, when do we want the petitions to be valid? The, I think the problem from the objections, excuse me, the objections. Uh, the problem from the, the citizen's perspective is on that October seventh meeting, where we instructed city staff to start preparing the specifications for the projects, it says proposed SAD. But there is no proposed SAD, I guess, in, in practice until the date that the public hearing is set. Is that, is that the city staff's perspective on that?
It, it would be the date that the public hearing happens and the council approves moving forward. In this case, it would be today.
Okay.
Right, so it just, the reasoning for that is because until you define what the district is, you don't know if those people that are filing the petition are even in the district to be affected.
Sure. Yeah, the difficulty is that the ordinance says, uh, that they may vote on, object to the proposed assessment. Maybe when we set, uh, when we instruct council, we shouldn't say proposed SAD because it looks like it has already been proposed. So either change the language of the ordinance or maybe change our internal processes to say, there is nothing proposed at this point, or I think my opinion would be.
Or proposed project rather than?
Proposed SAD, that's right. Uh, I think my preference would be we actually go to the people earlier, but again, as you've said, then we have the difficulty of knowing who's in the district, what are they going to pay?
Right.
Um, it's just such a truncated period, and we're expending staff resources in time when there might be a, an objection to it.
And until you see what the estimates are, you don't know whether it's even something that the city's going to be able to do that year, so.
Right, yes, whether we'll have the money. Yes, okay, good. Okay. Anything else? Councilman Flynn?
So could you explain when we vote, what exactly we're voting on for both Monroe and Berry? Are we voting to, I heard somebody earlier say, the next public hearing on Monroe Street. So are we just voting to move on to the next stage? Or are we voting tonight to actually say, yes, Monroe Street's going to be done, Berry Street's going to be done?
Yes, you're moving to approve the special assessment.
Okay, thank you.
So everyone can be charged up to the cap that is on this sheet. That won't actually be certified until we certify the rolls at the next public hearing. Okay, very good. We have one letter in opposition, one in support. This requires a majority vote to pass, so five votes.
So, so move.
Okay.
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey to approve the Monroe Street Special Assessment District, seconded by Councilman Stutzel. Katie Thibault, call vote.
Yes, Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soho?
Yes.
Stutzel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Hallidino?
No.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
And Councilperson Brown?
No.
Says yes to no, it passes, and that's Resolution three-sixty-eight.
Thank you, Katie. Should we have a motion to open the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is closed.
You've, you've in effect, you've in effect already done that by approving last time in the public.